Welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions if any, and then members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four against an item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate there is one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all the opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium at the top or the bottom of the stairs and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand, and if there are no objections to the staff recommendations, I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, we will end the public hearing session and begin the deliberation session where commissioners discuss each application with input from staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them or call the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves for discussing and voting on a given application. Recusal does not mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending on the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both are already voting due to absences. A reminder that the Planning Commission does make final decisions, subject to appeal, on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments, or PUDs. The Planning Commission body only makes recommendations on zoning applications with the city council making the final decision. At this time, please all turn all cell phones to silent or vibrate, and commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll go through the roll. Myself, Jay Stubbs, present. Mr. Allen Cameron. Ms. Jennifer Denson. Mr. Carlos Gant. Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson. Mr. Nick Amberger.
Here.
Mr. Scott Jones. Ms. Susan Carley. Mr. Kirk Matei. We have a quorum, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as, uh, that's on our desk.
A move.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Going to item number one, under holdovers, east side of North University Boulevard at the east terminus of La Barran Drive. It's in two parts, the subdivision and the rezone. It's tentative approval for the subdivision with eight conditions and a recommendation of denial for the rezone. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with these subdivision conditions? And do you have any questions for staff regarding the denial of the reason? Come on down to the podium.
Yes. Okay. Chondretta Porter, 5810 Monica Drive, 8 mile, 36613.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Okay. Um, I think the first thing was I applied for B4, not a B3, so that, I don't know if that makes a difference with any of that, but also the need to increase where the number of sites available for business and industry when there is a very large project that's going on, like right down from us, where a church is coming with a school and, um, centers and different things, the Right Way Christian Church, Christian Center Church right next to us, something that's doing something similar to what we're doing, and we're right down from that with what it is that we're proposing to be developed as well. So I was trying to see what would be the reason for the denial on that basis in the spot zoning situation. I just want to understand all of it, what you're saying it's being denied for.
Okay, I'll try and tape those in order, Mr. Chairman. First of all, B4 only exists downtown, uh, along the streets extending westward from the Hank Aaron Loop, along Spring Hill Avenue, Dolphin Street, Government Street. Those are the only instances that are zoned B4. It's a downtown urban area zoning classification. We have it as B3. B3 is one of the highest commercial classifications that we do have in the zoning ordinance. As you can see, uh, the site, it is surrounded by residential zoning. Uh, the Right Way Christian Center that she's referring to is further to the north. It's off the map. That area is zoned B2, which is a lesser zoning classification. So in terms of the analysis of this application based on the B3 zoning, the surrounding residential zoning and development, and the future land use map showing it as residential, those are the reasons why staff recommended denial.
It's for an event center. Multi-purpose event centers, like, um, I do like business development. I actually have my degree in that, so I can do classes there, big enough to do that, um, to also encompass just different things dealing with businesses, also event center for ceremonies, for receptions. Right.
Two?
Yes.
And we just checked the application. It did request B3.
So if it's, I mean, if it has to go down to B2, that's fine. Not just shooting for higher, and then if it had to come down to B2, that's fine.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm not concerned about what you're gonna do with the property, but if it was B3 and 20 years from now, somebody came in here, right on the backside of a subdivision, decided they wanted to put in a, you know, car wash or dealership or something like that.
Okay.
With high-mass lights and stuff, you know, that would be a lot more intrusive.
Right, right. I agree.
In what's currently purely residential area.
Okay. So that would be fine if it would have to go down to B2. That would be considered. I'm not sure how that part goes, but.
Yeah.
I've got a quick question for staff. So we're looking at rezoning the entire parcel. It looks to be a, it's like almost nine acres, right? So we'd be, again, opening ourselves up to pretty massive rezoning of land that could potentially be, I don't see anything. As long as parking, they could get their parking numbers, it could be almost any use.
That's correct. Any by right use in B3, automobile dealership, warehousing less than 40,000 square feet, any of those uses could go in there by right without any additional approvals required from the Planning Commission or the city council.
Any further questions from commissioners of the applicant or staff? All right, thank you, Ms. Porter. Is anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number One, either on the subdivision or the rezone? Is there anyone else here to speak against Agenda Item Number One, either for the subdivision or the rezone? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Two. And again, just a reminder to the applicant, we'll come back to, uh, this in the deliberation session. New subdivision application, number two, 186 Oklahoma Drive. It's been recommended for tentative approval, subject to eight conditions by the Planning Commission staff. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with those conditions and the recommendation of tentative approval? So if it's yes, that's good, but if you have any questions regarding those eight listed conditions, now's the time to ask those conditions. No questions? Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Two, 186 Oklahoma Drive? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to 186 Oklahoma Drive? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Three. 504 Western Drive. Recommended for tentative approval, subject to 10 listed conditions. Is the applicant present? You in agreement with all 10? Is there anyone else here to speak for number three, 504 Western Drive? Anyone here to speak against Agenda Item Three? Seeing none, we'll move on to number four. 3923 Patricia Drive. It's been recommended for holdover to the meeting of May 19th to allow the applicant to submit a revised application. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, um, if the commission will recall, this is the application where we had to post a corrective report, which you have before you now. It's recommended for holdover. We provided that same email that the commission received to the applicant. Um, the applicant contacted us today and seemed to be under the impression that that meant this application's not on the agenda. We did inform the applicant that they, someone did need to be here to represent this application and concur with the holdover, but that is all the information we have for you on that. I can tell you, you have copies of concerns from the neighborhood, and they may be here as well, but I just wanted to convey all the information.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. A reminder to those in attendance, you will have your chance to speak, either for or against, and at this time, I'll ask if there are anyone here to speak for Agenda Item Number Four, 3923 Patricia Drive? Is there one here to speak against Agenda Item Number Four, 3923 Patricia Drive? And if you'd like to come down and use the podium, speak your name and address for the
My name is William David Coggan. I live at 3936 Patricia Drive, which is directly across from the, uh, proposed subdivision. My house is the one with the pool on the right and the concrete driveway. No, the other, that one, right there. I have some pictures. Can I pass those out? Some of them, if, I don't know if y'all have these, but, okay, anyway. First of all, I probably stand to lose more than most of the people because this lot number one that's proposed is basically a low, like, like, kinda like a retention pond. Uh, it catches water. There is a culvert that goes from that lot under the road to that canal that you see on the west side of my driveway. Uh, it drains Benson Road, parts of Patricia Drive, and it's right, it's, it's in Lot One, it is most of Lot One. That will basically filling in that lot and abandoning that culvert, probably gonna cause me to flood. Uh, I've got several concerned neighbors behind me. Y'all can raise your hands, uh, that are in opposition to this. Uh, there's several reasons. We all wrote letters. The three small lots proposed are not, do not conform with the, uh, or are not harmonious, harmonious with the, uh, dwellings in the neighborhood. Uh, the, we feel like that this will drive property values down. Uh, there's just numerous reasons why this, uh, just, we, we're opposed to it. Uh, the elevation of Lot One is basically about three foot. Miles has a lift station right behind it, which, it's a lift station, you know, it's gonna be low. Uh, you know, it's, this is gonna cause problems for everybody when it floods, which, we're, we're near water, which, you know, is gonna flood. I don't know where this water's gonna go, you know? I know where it's gonna go. If you fill in the lot, it's coming, coming to me. So, uh, you know, this is, this is our main concern, and, uh, you know, it's, just doesn't fit in with where we are. We have all spent a lot of money on our houses, and, uh, we just, we're opposed to it. Uh, I have three other people that probably would like to speak. The question is, should we speak today or should we wait till the next meeting?
That's your prerogative, and based on the schedules of those individuals, if...
They're here.
Oh, if, so if they're here...
Probably best to go ahead and do it.
Certainly.
Let me, certainly, let me ask you this. Would you or your neighbors be opposed to a two-lot subdivision as opposed to three? Because sometimes the developer will make that decision if there's opposition from the neighbors.
Well, the, the, uh, the applicant came to us, uh, actually, he didn't come to us, but he purchased the lot from a lady who is here today. He told her that he was going to build a home he was going to live in on the lot. She was very, very particular in who she was selling this lot to. Uh, he, he made no, nothing about subdividing it. I talked to him twice. I was there when he staked the house out, which would have been in between two and three, right on the line. You know, I mean, he was gonna build a, build a house. He told me, he said, "I'm moving from midtown. I used to live in this area. This is where we're gonna live." And then six months later, the stakes went down, and all of a sudden, we get letters. Uh, so there are some people here today that felt like they probably should have gotten a letter that didn't. Uh, and there's people that are here today that, uh, are just disagree with the lot size, period. It doesn't conform. Most of the lots are probably close to an acre. I, I, I don't, I don't think so.
Any further questions from commissioners for the first speaker in opposition, Mr. Coggan?
Mr. Chairman, I got one question. Uh, it looks like the lot has a driveway. I wonder if there's just a single house on it.
There used to be a single house on this lot that burned down. It was before I moved into the neighborhood. Uh, it was on the, uh, op, on the lot, well, you can see the driveway, so it was probably between lots two and three.
Right-hand side.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes. And, uh, that lot, that house, I moved in in 16, late 16 or 17, and it wasn't there then, so. Uh, it's just, you know, we're, anybody in that area is opposed to it. There are many houses past me on Patricia Drive, and just, I couldn't find anybody that was agreeable with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coggan.
Thank you.
Reminder to those in the audience, we have four more opportunities for speak in opposition. Three, excuse me.
Good afternoon. My name's William Gibbons. I currently reside at 4560 Benson Road. Um, I'm the house to the left of the canal, just to the left of the former speaker, located catty corner to the lot in question. Um, I, myself, as well as the other members of the surrounding areas, seem to share a unified front in, um, some of our hesitations towards the proposal for subdivision. Um, I am the newest member to the area. We actually just purchased the home in December of this year, uh, moved into the area for the aesthetics of the area, for the large sprawling lot sizes, things of that nature. Um, mine and the shared concern seem to be mainly situated around, around two front. One, which he had touched on, was the aesthetics of the, and the current lot sizes. Um, the proposed lots are not in uniformity to the existing lot sizes. As a matter of fact, they are set to a fraction. The existing lot size, um, is in fact comparable to every other lot that's in the area, which was one of the appeals of the purchase of the area. Environmental and mainly flooding concerns is, um, we live on the river. That's the biggest concern that we have down there on flooding. Uh, the area, especially to the left of the lot in question and flowing to well past the middle of the lot, is a natural downgrade, negative flow retention pond area. Um, the pump station is located directly behind it, and all the flow flows basically to the canal and out to the river. There is actually a culvert pipe that runs from the retention pond canal, or from, uh, the canal under the road to the retention pond area on Lot One because of the natural accumulation area that, that happens in this, which was, um, shown in his photographs on everything. Um, buildup of this area would cause severe runoff issues, uh, gives heavy concern for flooding, and takes away from the natural lowland area that the lot, you know, currently resides on. Um, I had written a letter, um, to, to you guys stating a few sections that I'd found concerns with, uh, mainly regarding, uh, some of the, some of the issues, uh, as outlined in the subdivision regulations that I believe are, you know, this is in contradiction to. So, um, that was my main concern with everything. One for the, one for the subdivision lots not matching the current aesthetic of the neighborhood, um, and two, and the main concern being for drainage areas. The proposition of the lots that are in question are of such a small size that per the, you know, building regulations, I find it hard-pressed to see where they would be able to build in proper drainage and proper facilities in accordance to the requirements of the required lot sizes to fully account for that. If they build it up standard building procedure, um, it's gonna just divert water completely around that. As he had, as he had mentioned previously, everything's going to Patricia Drive, and everything on the left side of the road is coming out to me. I'm situated on a peninsula, and it's gonna cause a large issue. So, uh, those were my main concerns with everything. Uh, questions?
Any comments or questions from commissioners? All right, thank you, Mr. Gibbons.
Hi, I am Melanie Moore. My husband Donald, we, or the, um, people that we sold the lot to Mr. Meeks in 2020.
And your current, your current address?
I'm sorry?
Your current address is?
Oh, 3820 Patricia Drive.
Go ahead.
We purchased that lot in 2009 from the estate of Evelyn Latham that lived there. Um, we just purchased it as an investment and to kinda have a little bit control over what was gonna happen on the lot, so we had it, always had it for sale by owner, where we would know what the intentions were. Um, Mr. Meeks, uh, told me the same thing that you've heard, that he wanted to, um, live there and build a single-family home, and I believe that that was his intentions. And I know he's, he's in construction, and when, um, COVID hit and materials went up, I understood that he was gonna wait a while to build a house, and that's the last I've heard from him. Um, I've lived there, we've been there since 1971. I did live in the house directly across the street from the lot, and then now we've lived, um, down the street for 38 years, so I've been in the neighborhood a long time. It has always flooded, that lot has always held water. We knew that when we bought it, and it, when the lot holds water, it flows across the street. Now, we've tried to address that with the city. We would love the drainage to be corrected, but they've never corrected it. There is a large culvert in the, on the right-of-way there, but, um, that was our main concern. I do think his intentions were good, but, uh, when he changed his mind, he never, uh, we never knew that was gonna happen, so. And I can tell you, we would not have sold the lot to him if we had known that was his intentions.
Hey, I've got a question. It's only a 50-foot lot. It's got a setback line. Off of that setback line, how far does he have to build?
The setback lines shown are the minimum for the city, and so he can build on, up to that setback line.
So the house would be right there on the road?
25 feet back.
25 feet. So he would have no backyard at all, no front yard at all?
I'm not the applicant.
See what I'm saying? There's no room. There's no room. It's only .6 acres, and he's gonna build three houses. He gonna build it right there on top of each other, and you're gonna be right there on the road, and none of the other houses in there are built right on the road. It's a nice neighborhood, all the houses are set back, and all of them are on at least a half-acre or bigger lots, not three lots on 1.6 acres.
Thank you so much. Any further opposition speakers on this agenda item?
This'll be the final opposition speaker to this item. Good afternoon. Robert Scott Dowd. I'm at 4600 Benson Road, directly to the left of the proposed subdivision. Um, one of my main concerns is, is that Mr. Meeks, uh, who actually conveyed to Ms. Moore when he bought the property, um, and I would like to say ditto to the other three speakers. Everything that they've said, I didn't wanna repeat the things that have already been discussed. Um, but one of my concerns is that, uh, that Mr. Meeks, uh, told Ms., Ms. Moore, is that he grew up in this neighborhood. This neighborhood, Cypress Shores, was, was designed in 1960s. Uh, my house was built in 1965. So this, this is an established neighborhood. Um, it's not something that, this is not an outlying edge of the neighborhood. This is an undeveloped, uh, there has been a house on this lot previously, and it is conducive to what the lot sizes are in the neighborhood, .6, 3 acres. I think mine's right at .7. Most every lot in there is of that size. Um, so this is just not indicative of what the neighborhood, which is an established neighborhood from the 1960s, is actually, uh, you know, designed on. Sustainability, you know, that's a big key word that we hear these days. Sustainability, you know, consists of three different things, environmental, social, and economic. Um, this does not have any type of sustainability at all in any one of those facets of, of the definition. Um, so we're, we're looking at environmental impacts, we're looking at social impact, and we're looking at economic impact to all the surrounding homeowners. Like I said, ditto to the, everything that they've said, based off of, uh, the flood plain, the flood zone, Lot One, you have the pictures, we see that quite often, uh, from, from Lot One being completely underwater. Uh, I've looked up on the city map, the elevation there is three feet. Uh, the highest elevation on that, on all three proposed lots is seven feet, according to the city map. Um, so I ask you to please deny the request for any size subdivision for this single lot in our neighborhood, even inviting anyone to.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. All right, that concludes... All right, that concludes the opposition speakers for agenda item four, thirty-nine twenty-three Patricia Drive. We'll now move on to the next agenda item under group applications. Agenda item five, twelve forty-eight Mont Lamar Drive and thirty-five hundred Michael Boulevard. We have a subdivision and a rezone. Been recommended for tentative approval, subject to seven conditions on the subdivision and a rezone recommended for approval with conditions and is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the conditions for both the subdivision and the rezone? Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item five? Is there anyone else here to speak against agenda agenda item five? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Number six, one oh seven, one eleven, and one thirteen, North Lafayette Street and one oh six and one fourteen Providence Street. Uh, for the record, this is Saint Mary Catholic School subdivision. We have a subdivision recommended for tentative approval with six conditions. We have a PUD recommended for approval with findings of fact and ten conditions and then a planning approval with three findings of fact and nine conditions. So an extensive application, is the applicant present? Are you in agreement? Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item six? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to agenda item six? Are there any questions from commissioners on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item seven, the west side, west side of Providence Park Drive.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Papas.
Uh, the applicant contacted staff this morning and in the engineering comments, specifically item D, it requested the inclusion of a legal description for a future street. Uh, we have since clarified the future street that is referred to is actually part of an already approved subdivision, so it does it needs to be struck from the conditions.
Is the applicant aware of that strike? Oh, sorry, I should have asked if the applicant was present. Okay. So on agenda item seven, we have the subdivision, I'll just go through the motions here. Subdivision with nine conditions and the PUD with four findings of fact and eleven conditions. And you're in agreement with all of those? Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item seven? Is there anyone else here to speak against agenda item seven? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda eight, the northwest corner of Cochran Causeway and Dunlap Drive. Blakely Island subdivision. And then a rezone. It's been recommended for tentative approval with eight conditions on the subdivision and a rezone recommended for approval with notation and two conditions. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the conditions on the subdivision? Sure, come on down.
Almar Cinco, Jade Consulting, two oh eight North Reno Road, Fairhope. Um, quickly, item one, the fifty-foot center line is not a problem, uh we should be able to meet that, but number four uh about the administrative plan unit development, that's something we'll have to submit separately. Okay?
Yeah.
Because of that that shared access, we are expecting to to remain.
We can handle that through the administrative process once the rezoning and subdivision are complete. I do want to bring to the commission's attention and the applicant while he's here, the uh letter of concern that you have in front of you.
Yeah, I read that question for applicant. What is the, can you explain the use of this um? Is this a?
Yes, I can. I was just looking at this. This is a letter of concern from somebody?
I'm also asking about it being basically a convenience store.
Oh, yes. No, there's nothing being sold other than fuel on this site. It's called a card lock facility. I admit that I did not know what that was at the time. The truck pulls in, they have a card that's registered with Pilot Thomas, they slide that card, they get their fuel, they leave. No one works on this site. It is uh just completely automated with the card that unlocks the the fuel system.
It's only designed for CDL?
Correct. That's right.
Any further questions from commissioners on the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item eight? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to agenda item eight?
Quick question for staff. In the rezoning, do we consider any sort of limitations to that use? It's kind of a?
No, we we cannot retract one permitted use under that zoning classification. The um applicant will have to do self-restriction. That's done occasionally.
It doesn't seem like there's enough land anyway.
Yeah, it there to do to do a to add a, excuse me, to make this a retail facility, there's not much land available to build a structure uh to house that. It would have to be a self-restricted item.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners on agenda item eight? All right, that will conclude the public hearing session. At this time, commissioners will move on to back to agenda item one and move through the agenda of the deliberation session. Um, back to the holdover of east side of North University Boulevard at the east terminus of La Barron Drive was recommended for tentative approval with the subdivision. And then there was some discussion with respect to the rezone. So should we take these separately and start with the subdivision? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? The motion for the subdivision passes. Moving on to B of this application on the rezone.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So I would think B two would be appropriate, but um, you know, with with respect to the neighborhoods, I mean, should we, is anybody interested in doing any kind of buffer or anything like that? I mean, it's already super buffered as it is.
You have the standard requirements. If the commission feels it's necessary, they could incorporate more, either be an additional setback. Um, the site plan proposed, this is not a conditional type of approval. You could consider putting in a, you know, a maintenance of a required buffer strip if you so choose along the perimeter of the property. But the minimum standards are a six-foot privacy fence or wall. The other thing I would say, just to kind of confuse the issue more, but unintentionally so, is based on the site plan, if the applicant develops the site in general compliance with the proposal, I'd almost hate to see a privacy fence put in because if you stick with this, then you can still maintain all this vegetation here, which would, to me, be preferable than going in and clearing, so you have to put in a wooden privacy fence. You get more buffer with this.
I agree.
But a quick question, Margaret, or if we were to rezone this in a subdivision, they're building one building, so flood's not required, they're not tied to the site plan?
That is correct. That is correct.
And could do potentially, I mean, I'm not saying the applicant is doing this, but just for what we're approving, would just be any sort of development on eight point nine five acres under B two?
Under B two. That is correct.
That's my concern. I mean, we're up in a neighborhood area, I get the university boulevard, it's a high traffic road that potentially commercial use will grow that way. I could see it up towards university with some lower zoning further in, but I just can't see taking this big parcel this far from intersection.
Wouldn't it also create spot zoning even at B two?
It, while it is a large piece of property, this this map gives a better perspective because it brings you all the way down to Moffett Road. Um, but you know, you have the commercial property fronting that Moffett Road service road right here, but then you have all residential zoning here, of course, across the street. You do pick up with the B one further to the north and the new school. Um, but all of this is zoned residentially and then directly across the street and then at the back corner, it's developed residentially. The commission, of course, can consider the lower classification of B two. The other issue with rezonings um is the timing of the request. You know, does the commission feel like the commercial classification just has not made it to this property yet?
The church, we approve it. That?
It's. It's to the north. Yeah.
It all looks very similar.
Yeah.
Yeah. There wasn't spot zoning if it was touching that.
Yeah. The church is the blue property. Then you have proper B one, I apologize, B one buffer business. Uh, the other event center is proposed for here. It is pending B two zoning, but in that particular instance, it's adjacent to a B an existing B one. So. Exactly. It it's this, this maps, the distances are much larger than what you what is, it appears because these lots are, you know, roughly two hundred and fifty feet deep.
Is the other event center, has that been approved? I can't recall.
It's been recommended by the commission. It has not had action by the council.
But did it have a PUD along with it?
No.
So it's not.
That is correct. The school is. Yes, what they have submitted uh does comply with the minimum parking standards, I believe. But even if it does not, this is not a site plan specific approval. It will simply at the time, if the zoning proceeds, the applicant will have to simply submit compliant plans. Ms. Short just pointed out to me, the site plan does not provide adequate parking. Um, you know, I guess if we could hear some of the specific concerns, we could try and figure out a way to implement some conditions. Uh, like I said, you could have a buffer strip, which means you have to be at least this deep, leave the property and the vegetated area undisturbed. You could put that around the perimeter of the property, something of that nature.
So so if I'm reading this right, there's a hundred and fifty foot, there's a hundred and fifty foot uh distance between the property line and the parking. On the side, maybe on the south side and then a hundred and nine on the north.
From the south.
So essentially, if we did a hundred foot, a hundred foot vegetative buffer around the perimeter, then that would allow them a little bit of extra room on the eastern side to expand parking if they needed to add parking, but otherwise, we leave a hundred foot of forested buffer so that they get what they want and protect their neighbors. Right.
While we're talking about this, I'd like to ask Maria, maybe that's what y'all are figuring, but I've got them like a third, just only providing a third of the parking that'd be required approximately. So that would change the site plan dramatically.
Well, I just, I was gonna say, if, I mean, before we go putting all these.
I was about to say that in addition, especially on the front side as well, it's already that uh a requirement from the city that I have to be so far back anyway. So going around it, I do agree with you guys because that was the plan all along is to have the vegetative buffer that goes around it because it visually would be appealing and also provide sound barrier, which we wouldn't allow anything to be outside anyway, that would get on everybody's nerve. But I'm just saying the sound barrier as well as visual barrier would be around the property automatically. It's easier as well for us.
And I think, you know, part of this is that had this been a pod, there have been multiple buildings or any other things, you would be held to this design. Just doing, yeah, this type of application, you're not necessarily held to it. And so what we're talking about doing is kind of trying to perceive potential issues to allow a development, but as it is now, it is spot zoning.
Well, and to try and anticipate future conflicts between the land uses and incorporate conditions on this approval to mitigate those.
So, you know, it's, if you wanted to do any other future builds here, what we're proposing would restrict that.
So would it restrict me from, so say if I wanted to do like um pretty, like a business complex and then like have where other businesses could possibly rent on a property or something like that?
Other buildings.
Mm-hmm. So if it was zoned as.
Yeah, it's a company.
Oh, that would, I mean, yeah, what I'm trying to do is build that, what we're looking at now. And so I want to get approval for that. If we're doing like future use and we want to come in like what I was just saying, if, you know, other buildings or whatever, I thought you had to come in through here to do that anyway, so I mean, it wasn't anything, you know.
I guess you wouldn't be, you'd have to give in a pod there, at that point, if you added another building would create, but you could grow the footprint of the building.
But I don't want it to be to where if, where I'm so locked to where I couldn't do anything else. You know what I mean? Like if I wanted to build a smaller event that would just host smaller things, so then, you know, I don't want to.
Here just handed me, he he gave me some uh recommend, kind of recommended measures here that would give a little bit of flexibility around this proposed type of footprint. And I'm gonna make a motion so that we can move on with our lives here. So um I would move to recommend the zoning to B two to the city council with the uh condition of a two hundred foot wooded buffer on the eastern and western sides and a fifty foot wooded buffer on the north and south. That gives ample ample room in the center to, if you have to. Yeah. I mean, that's a lot of room.
It's it's it's, yeah, that what I'm thinking about now, because I'm I'm want to consider the parking for it, the building is is going to be roughly ninety feet wide. So if I were to take, are you saying two hundred from both sides? I'm sorry, a hundred from each side?
Two hundred from the west side, two hundred from the east side, and fifty from the north and south.
Yeah, fifty from the north and south because it goes deep.
Yeah.
That would be a hundred taken away. Would that be enough?
Yeah.
Would that enough for, only because I don't know now, I'm not at that part yet. For parking is what I'm concerned with. With how, why? Right, okay.
You have, because you've got eleven hundred feet of depth.
Correct. You're saying two hundred when you're.
It essentially just takes the box that you can develop in and shrinks it down.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, 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 okay.
I just say, there seems to be some natural issues with the topography of this land also. I, I'd suggest an idea of a holdover where you could have time to meet with your engineer and lay out parking before we started putting restrictions. Because I think from my count, you have about a third of what will be required shown on the plans. And so that, that's gonna, that's gonna be important to lay out before we put these restrictions on there, because it may be that the flattest ground and the easiest ground to park on might not be in that area.
It's a flat piece, if that's what you're asking. The land itself is flat. Is that what you're asking?
That's not what our...
Okay, I'm sorry.
...typo drawing shows, but it may, may be wrong.
No, it's, yeah.
But I think, I think what the Commissioner's saying is that rather than us, we're, we've got an idea of what it might be, but it's really up to you and your engineer to consider what, what would best suit you. We're trying to, we're trying to find ways to say yes, but we think that, is that B two is probably, there's just too much, there's just too much wibble room in there to be comfortable with the neighborhood.
Okay.
However, you think, you could, whatever it is, yeah, if you could get with engineer or somebody to say, you know, give us something that says, this is where we know we're gonna put parking, and it's, I mean, we want to, yes.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Quick, quick question for staff. It's a subdivision and a rezoning. Is the potential setbacks, are those recorded in the subdivision? And my point of asking the question is, is there a way for us to proceed with the rezoning, uh, especially because it takes more steps?
Rezoning does take more steps. I do agree with the Commission member that brought up, as much as staff doesn't care for holdovers either, that the applicant take this drawing, if the Commission is looking at those setbacks, have the surveyor engineer put those lines on this drawing so that the applicant knows exactly what she's agreeing to and the impact that it's going to have on the development of this property, both for what you want to do now and for what you would want to do in the future. Well, the buffer, so that means undisturbed area, which then would mean no parking could go in there, which could impact you with what you're wanting to do now. Now, that would just, we would simply, we'd be looking at the May fifth agenda, but again, I think it's important to show that buffer and make sure that it does not have any unintended consequences in the Commission's effort to try and move this forward, because while it may be flat towards the front, it looks like on this topo map here, there's some topo on the property.
To the applicant, I think that's a faster path than us carving it up, you taking it to your engineer, it not working, and then you gotta resubmit an application to change it all.
So I have to wait another month to do this?
No, ma'am.
No, this is the fastest.
We are, I am simply, staff is simply recommending a holdover incorporating the buffer, and we'll lay it out in the letter, um, so that you can make sure with your engineer or designer that it still allows you to do what you're trying to do.
Okay, so I'm clear. We're saying fifty feet on the left and right side. Would this two-hundred include what's already required?
Fifty on the north and south.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, I'm going to rescind my motion uh, for the B two approval with the wooded buffer. And instead, request, or make a motion to request holdover until May the fifth, pending the applicant's review with the fifty-foot wooded buffer on the north and south and the, uh, eastern, western buffer, two-hundred fifty, is that what it was? Two-hundred.
Two-fifty?
Two-hundred.
Two-hundred. Two-hundred.
Two-hundred feet.
Okay. Now, back to what I was saying, would the two-hundred include...
Well, hold on, hold on, we get, so, we gotta make sure we get this motion right.
Okay.
So, that motion's for May fifth. Is that correct?
Yes.
With the fifty-fifty, two-hundred, two-hundred?
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion I'm making.
Do I have a...
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Nick? Properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes for the rezone, holdover until May fifth.
And the sub was approved.
The subdivision was approved. Moving on to number two. New subdivision application, one-eight-six Oklahoma Drive, recommended for tentative approval with eight conditions. The applicant was present and in agreement. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two on the agenda passes. Number three, five-oh-four Western Drive, recommended for tentative approval with ten conditions. Applicant was present and in agreement. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three on the agenda passes. Number four, thirty-nine-twenty-three Patricia Drive. Four speakers in opposition. Recommended for holdover.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for a holdover until the May nineteenth meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like to remind those in attendance that you will have the opportunity to speak then as well, because it'll be another agenda item. Number five, twelve-forty-eight Mont Lamar Drive and thirty-five-hundred Michael Boulevard. Group applications, we'll take them separately. The subdivision recommended tentative approval with seven conditions.
So moved? Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. Rezone, recommended for approval. Applicant was in agreement.
Move to approve the rezoning? Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes to send rezone to City Council. Agenda Item Six. Take all three of these separately. Subdivision. Applicant was present, tentative approval with six conditions.
So moved? Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. Plan unit development. Uh, recommended, we have six findings of fact and ten conditions.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation with findings of fact A through F. Second.
Properly moved and seconded with findings of fact, all. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. See, under Agenda Item Six, planning approval, recommended for approval with three findings of fact. And ten, nine conditions.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation with findings of fact A, B, and C. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion on the planning approval? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Seven. West side of Providence Park subdivision and PUD. We'll take them separately. Applicant was present, present and in agreement with the nine conditions on the subdivision.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded with the strike of number four D. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes with the strike on the PUD, recommended for approval with four findings of fact and eleven conditions. The applicant was present and in agreement. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda Item Seven passes. Final Agenda Item Number Eight, northwest corner of Cochrane Causeway and Dunlap Drive. Recommended for tentative approval. There were eight conditions. The applicant was present, and there was confirmation of condition four. Discussion with staff. We'll take these separately on the subdivision and then the rezone.
Uh, move to approve subdivision based on staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. The rezone for Agenda Item Eight. Applicant was present in agreement with the conditions with recommended, recommendation for approval.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes to send the rezone to City Council. That concludes the deliberation session of the April twenty-first meeting. Is there any further business from staff or further comments? Our next meeting is May fifth, Cinco de Mayo. We will not have refreshments.